Time to get on. So if I can get a mover and a second or please to open our regular meeting of council. Move by councillor Drago Stefanik, second by councillor Ted Shenman. Be it resolved that we do call this regular meeting of council to order on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried and opposed. And I turn it over to councillor Belinda Kistamaker for Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
The council of the township of Hornpa- uh, I'm sorry, the council of the corporation of the township of Hornpa would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land on which we regather here today is the Treaty nine nineteen oh five nineteen oh six territory, the traditional lands of Indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples.
Thank you councillor Kistamaker. We're on to item number three, review and note any changes to the agenda. And we have the agenda um to be approved as presented. If I can get a mover and a second or please move by. Councillor Ted Shenman, second by councillor Belinda Kistamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented. Those in favor?
I'll move it.
And a Kistamaker, second by councillor. Am I okay to put you as a second or Peter?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, second by councillor Peter Kistamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpa hereby adopt the regular meeting of council, sorry, adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two as distributed. Any comments on the minutes? I just had one comment and I did point it out to Eileen today in our agenda meeting. And it just needs to be fixed um. The resolution for our council meeting times, I'm just getting down to it here now, uh, item fifteen point three of our minutes. We did choose that on February the seventh, we would meet instead of Tuesday. And it was just an error in the recording of the minutes. The resolution is correct. That I did sign the resolution that had Tuesday, February seventh as our meeting date. So that'll be corrected in the minutes.
And sorry, mayor.
Oh, go ahead. Yes?
I was just going to say that we've already actually corrected it, so it's good to go now.
Okay, great. So any further corrections or deletions of the minutes from council? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
That is carried and opposed. Item six point two is the adoption of our special meeting minutes from January the ninth. If I can get a mover and a second or please move by councillor Drago Stefanik, second by councillor Ted Shenman. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpa does hereby adopt the meetings of the s- me- minutes of the special meeting of council held on Monday, January ninth, twenty twenty-three as distributed. Any comment or note to those minutes? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried and opposed. Item number seven is business arising from the minutes. I do have a couple of questions just from our uh regular meeting minutes. Um, the first one was the Canadian Summer Jobs twenty twenty-three. The application deadline was January twelfth. I just wanted to make sure that that application got in on time.
Yes, it did. I can confirm that it was uh submitted on January twelfth or before the deadline.
Perfect. And um item number eleven point four, I guess, and also I, another question would, are we going to be getting an update then during the manager's report? Uh, I was just wondering where we're at with the CN crossing maintenance. The new um resolution process we're going through.
Uh, we don't have any current updates at this moment, but we will be reaching out um uh to the, to CTA for uh an update to see if they have any further information at this time. And then we can provide council uh with an update.
Perfect. Thank you, Eileen. That was the only comments I had from our minutes. Council, do you have any uh from business arising from the minutes or questions of? Okay, moving on. To item number eight, which is deputations, presentation tender words and open session. So we have council discussion on the arena expansion project. And we have a report from Stacy Randell, our economic development officer. Stacy, do you want to speak to your report before I open up for que- comments?
If if council has any questions, they they can ask and I'll try to provide answers.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I open up the floor for questions on the report. For council?
I'm good.
Councillor Drago Stefanik, thank you, Peter.
Yeah, true, mayor. I think it's a good report. It's self-explanatory. I mean, we discussed it ad nauseam, actually. And I think everything is captured really well. Good job, Stacy. And I think uh I'm under the understanding we'll proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Stefanik. Okay, any other further comments or questions from council? I do have a few questions, Stacy. Um, the one is with the item number six after on the last page before the heading consultation, it says, however, it is important to note that council's direction to J L Richards will have to wait upon the ISAP discussion and our decision. And um I'm wondering why that needs to wait?
Okay, so um we had a discussion with the ISAP team. And so right now we're under contract with them for the full project. And we have to do it within the budget of four point six by the deadline. So if if we're staying status quo, we can move forward with the project. But if we're going for a scope change, that has to be approved. So we're having it, we're, we're in discussion with the ISAP team on change. We'll need direction from council to say if we're gonna do a scope change and um the four options are laid out there. Um, the answers to the questions, if that's what you're talking about, Mayor Fort, we could give them the answers, but we'll have to uh wait for the approval or uh partial approval to move forward with the project.
Well, my concern is that we've already signed a contract with J L Richards. We already are on to pay them. And I'm concerned that if we wait um, you know, for approval from ISAP, like, we have to make a decision as council that we know we can't do the full scope of the co- project. We have decided at like councillor Stefanik has said at nauseam that we're going with the third option um of this report, like of looking for the scope change to do the renovations in addition to just add the library and a fitness facility. And I'm just, I I just want council's recognition and that we've already, we have, we have contracted J L Richards. We, we can't get out of that. We have to spend that money. Like, or we have to forward with that. So I'm concerned if we wait six months, we're going to get delayed.
So we, when we spoke to the ISAP team, we, we wrote, raised that concern. We said we didn't come back to ISAP team until we got the magnitude, uh high level magnitude of thirteen million. And they said they understand that, but the contract that we've signed with the provincial and the federal government is for the full scope of the project in the four point six million done by December twenty-six. So if we're to, we need to get the scope change to move forward with a smaller scope. So we explained the whole thing with the COVID changes and with the the higher construction costs and it coming in so much higher. And they said that it's, that's understood, but we're, the township is under contract with ISAP for the full project under the, or in the four point six by Jan- or um March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
Right, right, which, which can't be afforded anymore. And they know that.
They do know that, yeah.
But I guess what I'm
It's, it's not even a guarantee that we'll get the scope change. Um, they're, they're on our side. They're very, very um uh excited about the project. They said that the Hornpa project, again, there was thousands and thousands of applications. We were in the top twenty. They want this project to go forward, but we do need the scope approval.
Right. I get that we need the scope approval to go ahead with, with the funding from them to do the entire project. But no matter what, if we get that approval or not, we have to um, we can still move forward with what we've already decided from J L Richards and this council of what they want to spend. Because even if they come back and tell us we have to spend thirteen million, we can't do it. Like, we can't do the full scope of the project.
Right. That's why we're applying for the scope change. Well, with, with your direction, of course.
Right. This, council, are you understanding my uh thoughts on this? Of keeping both items going of with council's direction of what we want the project to look like? And the direction we've given J L, because J R, or say, ju- oh my goodness, J L Richards is supposed to come back to us with a better timeline and um at our last meeting with them, that was what we had asked them to do.
Yeah.
Yes, are you, okay, I just want to make sure people are understanding what I'm saying is that if we halt completely, I I don't, I think we're gonna lose valuable time. And I don't think we're gonna save any money in that sense that we still have to pay J L Richards, no matter what. Melissa, go ahead.
I just want to point out that if ISAP doesn't allow for the scope change, then it would be on us to apply to ISAP for a wind down. So we wouldn't get stuck with those dollars to pay G L, J L Richards. We would, we would apply to ISAP for a wind down and then we would, they would cover the cost that we already paid.
Okay, thank you for that. So does that include the cost that they're working on right now then for us? Because we, we did that before this meeting. Like, my, my question is, I have no problem with applying for the change of scope. We have to do that if we want to change the project. But at the same time, how long, like, how far can we go now with J L Richards? That we've already gone before we have to stop communicating with them and halt the project till ISAP gets back to us?
Well, we haven't been told to halt communication with them. If, if you have specific questions that you want us to ask the ISAP team, then we can do that. We can uh send an email.
Yes, I, I think we just need clarification on that, is how far we can go into the process with J L Richards. Because currently they're, they're working on our behalf. We haven't told them not to, so that's. So I guess the clarification, go ahead councillor Kistamaker Belinda.
So basically, you'd, I think uh we should be concerned if we're going to uh get ourselves in trouble somewhere with J R Richards. Uh, because we're waiting for a decision from um the grant people? Is that what you mean?
That's exactly what I mean, Belinda, is that we are under contract with J L Richards. We've already
Yeah.
uh hired them to do work on our behalf. And if we've done, and we've committed to that work, so and if it is included in the wind down, if we end up having to go that route to ensure ISAP knows that as well. Like, so that we can continue on with the work on one hand. Uh, go for the scope change on the other hand with ISAP, but at the same time, we're we, we signed an agreement, we have to fulfill that obligation.
So our obligation with ISAP um supersedes our contract with J L Richards. And, and J L Richards knew when we got this um high level magnitude that because the scope had changed, that we would have to go back to ISAP for a change of scope.
So they know that already?
They do, yes.
Okay, so that's explicitly written in our contract?
That if there's a change of scope, it has, that, I'm not sure. I'd have to check and see what's in our contract, but we, J L Richards knew because they were commissioned to, to do the full scope and they're not. So when they gave us the high level of magnitude, it, it was impossible to do the project under those dollars. So they, they knew the whole process that we would have to go back to ISAP for a scope change.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, go ahead.
If we move forward with J L Richards without getting the scope change and we spend extra dollars on J L Richards, the municipality might get liable, be liable to pay those dollars and the grant won't cover them. Without, if we move forward without a scope change. And then we won't get, pay for that.
Okay, I'm understanding that, but we're in currently, we're working with J L Richards. So when is the cutoff of when they're not gonna pay it anymore? So if we pass this resolution tonight, what I'm being told by staff is that all work stops till ISAP. Is that what I'm understanding then? Like, we call J L Richards tomorrow and say stop working on the project?
No, so we will send an email to the ISAP team tomorrow to clarify the question that you've had, for sure.
Okay.
Um, when the work has to stop.
Okay, thank you. Eileen, go ahead. I think you're on mute still, Eileen. I can't see your, yes, you are.
Sorry, yes, I was on mute. Um, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to confirm, yes, with uh with uh Stacy that we'll, we'll reach out to ISAP and um and ask them the question that you just posed, uh Mayor Ford, about how far can we go with J L R? Um, but I think for right now, the policy direction that we need um from, from council um is, you know, which is to choose beti- between which scope options. There's four there that uh Stacy has listed in her report. Um, and if we can get a direction from council on which one um they'd like the staff to move forward with um just at, at this point. Um, and then, like I said, we can, we can definitely pose all the questions that council has to ISAP.
Okay, I believe we've already given this direction. It was in that uh we wanted to change the scope, stay within the budget. So that would be uh bullet three, I applied to ISAP for the scope change.
Thank you.
And I'm just, I am concerned about that though, because we don't have the full scope change from J L Richards either. We don't have those, we asked them to bring back documents to, am I the only one frozen? Can people hear me right now? It's froze.
You seem to get it from my side. It's fine, that's your own.
Thank you councillor Stefanik. Um. Is that we're going to ask for a scope change and we haven't actually completely decided on that scope change yet, because we have not seen the final drawings from J L Richards. So I'm, I'm concerned that we're gonna ask for a scope change and we're not even gonna have the full items that, like, I don't want to have to ask again for another scope change. Drago, go ahead. Sorry, I just saw Drago's hand there. Go ahead, Drago.
Go ahead, Stacy, go ahead. I'll, I'll come to, go ahead, Stacy.
We can, we can definitely ask. We can, we can tell them that we would like that.
Stop right here just a second. I am in charge of the meeting. I say who's gonna speak. And I would like to hear what Drago has to say first and then we'll come back.
Well, I'm, I'm mystified at this moment. I discussed, I actually dreamed about the arena last couple nights ago. I thought we did, did the scaled on version. It was approved by unanimously by the entire council. They were, we were looking at rough dates. We said, let's not build in winter. Everyone agreed. So I thought we had rough dates shows and ready, and I'm being told this. I never realized it was difficulties. I never realized we ran into a wall. I mean, I, I was expecting to say, yeah, we're going ahead today. And I gotta be sincere and honest. It, it, it seems, you're mystified. I truly am, mayor.
Thank you for that councillor Stefanik. Go ahead, Stacy.
I, I was just gonna clarify that we would say that our, we could talk to the ISAP team about the fact that J L Richards was gonna come back with a, a more succinct uh change of scope. And even the phased approach, because we did tell the ISAP team that it was a scaled down. We told them what we've, council's decided so far. And that we wanted them to release the second part or the other portions of the scope of the project, so we could apply for further funding to continue the project as well. So we can say that we're waiting for some documentation still from J L Richards and we can include that. So I can get clarification on that as well.
Okay, thank you for that, Stacy. I do like that better, that we get clarification, because I don't want us to have to apply for a change again, that we need to have the project fit at that and have the funds for it. Councillor Shenman, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. I was uh of the understanding that we were looking for that further clarification um from J L Richards before we made a final decision and that we had brought up the concern that we wanted to make sure we stay within the funding allocated for their, their fee to make sure that we didn't incur extra fees at the last meeting.
Yes, that's my understanding too, uh councillor Shenman, that we were staying within the budget with J L Richards. And that we wanted the scope of the project to fit within the four point four budget. And that we wanted the feel and the make of the building to feel cohesive and that they were going to come back with a similar option one with the renovations out the front of the building. But um that they were going to modify some of the way it had been originally situated. Is all of council on the same page with that? I think we all need, we're just, I think we're having a bit of a communication issue with this particular project. So I'm looking for confirmation council from council that what I've just said is your understanding of where we are at with the project.
And I was on the same page as that, madam mayor. I thought we were gonna just investigate all our options before confirming everything. I thought we had a little bit of time.
Okay, thank you councillor Kistamaker, Peter. I'm seeing uh confirmation from councillor Shenman, nodding of the head, yes. Councillor Kistamaker Belinda as well?
Yeah.
Okay, and councillor Drago Stefanik? Yes, okay. Okay, so um for the resolution, for the motion, because we do, we do want to cha- we need to do the change of scope. But um with your direction, Stacy, and with this conversation we've had, there is some leeway in your conversations with ISAP to make sure that we, they know where we're at, that we still have some final documents coming from J L Richards, or these high level documents?
Yes, we, staff, um, we get direction from staff to work on the change request. Then we'll set up other conversations with um I, the ISAP team to process the application. So w- we have some time. It's not, um, it wouldn't be done tomorrow. We would have to work with the ISAP team to put the application and and get the papers. But we don't even have the, the paperwork to put in the, the change request until we get the motion from council to go for a change request. We haven't seen the paperwork yet.
Okay, so then we would have time as well then to see those documents that we're waiting for J L Richards to bring back to us?
More than likely, like, we clarify with that with, yeah.
Okay, because from my understanding, what I'm thinking is, those are the documents that they're going to need to change the scope. Because it's tho- like, it's not, it's the actual figures that they need to show.
Right, so we don't have the plan for exactly the change of scope we're planning to do, but we need council's resolution to even get the paperwork to do the change of scope.
Okay.
So this is why we're putting the report forward, so we can, council can give us direction to change the scope. We can talk to the ISAP team and then they will send us the paperwork to change the scope.
Okay. So the, the motion that's proposed, I do see a hand up. Uh, Drago, do you still have your hand? Uh, would you like to speak or is that from past? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Um, so the motion on the floor that reads right now, the suggestion motion is to be resolved at the council, corporation, the township of Hornpa does hereby authorize the C A O clerk to request a change of scope for the township's uh Hornpa's upgrading and expansion of current facility project to the in, investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, I S A P, Community Culture and Recreation Stream. Um, the only problem I have with that is that it's very vague. I would like it to include with the final drawings or the high level to fit the high level um because this is ve- very vague. Could we not include that it um? I'm not exactly sure what those documents that J L Richards are bringing back to us. Could it include that, Eileen? I'm uh looking for your direction there.
Um, to be honest, I'm not entirely sure. Um. I, I don't, I'm, I don't I don't see why not, but um yeah, I'd need to, I'd need to look into it and uh and see if we could include that.
Well, I know we can include it. I'm just looking for the wording of how to include it, just so that we give clear direction of what the scope change is from council's perspective. Is we want the scope change to match the um the documents that we're waiting from J L Richards to bring back, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I am not sure exactly what uh the doc-, like, what exactly the documents would be either, so um sorry.
Okay, um, go ahead, Melissa. Sorry, my head was down, reading.
I would suggest that you just defer this resolution until we have the proper wording to pass the resolution from council, if they're not comfortable passing the resolution with the vague wording.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, I think there was direction, though you needed direction tonight, Eileen and Stace, or Stacy, so that you could move forward? Yeah, okay. Okay, and then I'm I'm gonna propose this uh wording. Be it resolved at the Council, the Corporation, the Township of Hornpane does hereby authorize the CAO clerk to request a change of scope for the Township of Hornpane's upgrading and expanding of current facility project, the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program, ISAP, Community Culture Recreation S- Stream, due to the unforeseen rise in per, building costs over the COVID period of the initial application in twenty nineteen. Hornpane is excited to continue with the project and stay within its current budget of four-point-six million dollars, four-point, sorry, four million, six-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and two cents. And we are hoping for a successful change for Option One from JL Richards. Period. Is council good with that? Resolution?
I'm good with that.
Okay, if I can get a mover and a seconder, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Counselor Kissamaker, second by Counselor Ted Sheniman. As just read by the mayor, and this recording will be used to document the resolution. I put it to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried. None opposed. Thank you, council, and thank you, Stacy, for your report. Okay, so moving on to item number nine, Correspondence Action Items. We have nine-point-one is the Ontario Good Roads Association Conference Request for Municipal Delegations. So uh, Good Roads, you know, we did a delegation last year with um Du- uh the Public Works Manager Dwayne Goodrow and our Deputy Clerk, Jen- Jennifer Hill. And um that's the only delegation that I would see putting forward again. We had a meeting at the Northeast Superior's Mayor Group about um moving forward with that Drive Test Centers delegation update, and I had no problem for um leaving that again, as I'll be going to that conference. And in meetings today, I did suggest to Eileen that we may want to request a delegation for the Connecting Links with MTO. And trying to increase the funding envelope that's available with Connecting Links. Um, our past CAO, Gail Jeremy, did some extensive research into this back in October, November, council. If you remember, we decided not to apply to Connecting Links at that time, because some of the issue or some of the building we needed for the road would not be covered, and one of the things was like a sidewalk. So when I'm talking about the Connecting Links program, this is the program that connects the Highway Six Thirty-One that runs through our community, known as Leslie Avenue. And if we wanna upgrade that, trying to upgrade it with um sidewalks and having it a a beautiful area that comes through our community, but that is top priority would be safety. So that was one um item that I had suggested. We may wanna do a delegation to the MTO for, an advocate for. But that would be up to council's uh choosing. And that, remember, it does take time to build these delegations and staff time for that. And is there any other issues from council? I put it to council first, and then I'll go to you, Eileen. Drago, Counselor Stefanic, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with your statement you just made. Uh, number one, number two, you have all the background information. So it's a no-brainer. All the information you have, um you have to obviously review it again, and I certainly would uh encourage your your team to uh approach that issue uh at the conference. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stefanic. I'm not seeing any other comments at this time from council. Eileen, would you like to comment? I know that you had said that your SM team or your senior management team would meet and might have comments?
Uh, yes, so we had spoken, and we were uh in addition to, um I believe you had mentioned the Drive Test follow-up that you were thinking of possibly doing. Um, we were going to just um add, you know, at the end of the delegation, just to recognize the work. Um, and we're excited to see the work that's gonna start um on Highway Six Thirty-One. Um, just by the MTO. So that was one thing that we had confirmed that we wanted to um move forward with. As for the Connecting Links, uh that wasn't uh discussed. So uh, you know, we'd have to get back to council on that. Um just because uh there are quite a few other things going on at the moment around that timeline. Um, but but that's something we can, I can discuss with uh with staff as well.
Okay. So your suggestion is if we do do the Connecting Links, then we would put that "thank you" on the end of our delegation, thanking the MTO for the upgrades to Highway Six Thirty-One?
Oh, no, sorry. I was thinking it would be like a addition to the the Drive Test follow-up delegation.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I wouldn't wanna put the Highway Six Thirty-One with the Drive Test delegation, just because that delegation is um a group delegation with the Northeast Superior's Mayor's Group. And I wouldn't wanna isolate out our community in that delegation. But um uh, council, I put it out to council. Do you want to do a delegation for the Connecting Links, asking for them to revisit the funding on that? If I get consensus, we'll bring back a resolution to our motion for the twenty-fifth meeting. And that'll give time for staff to um put in the delegation request. If I can get consensus there? Yes, I'm seeing yes. I have three yeses. Yes?
I'm good with it.
Okay, thank you for that. So if we can get a motion uh on our upcoming agenda to submit a delegation to ask for increased funding for the Connecting Links program to incre-, uh basically, it's to add extra funds for new infrastructure that's not currently there. Right now, they only replace uh what's currently there, and the new infrastructure that they would add would be the wastewater management. That's it. Or the storm water, sorry, the storm water. Okay, Eileen, do you need any more information for that item?
Uh, just, I just wanted to confirm, so um this is to be put on an upcoming agenda, you said?
Yeah, we can have the motion for our uh twenty-fifth meeting, and then we can put it to writing, that we wanna do that as council. Okay, and I would uh totally applaud your suggestion of putting the "thank you" to the MTO within that too, at the end, and just highlighting, we need that they haven't forgotten us. Okay, council, moving on to nine-point-two, Water Bill Issue. And I'll ask Melissa, our Client Service Manager Treasurer, do you have anything you wanna speak to this?
I'll just give council a little uh little background. So the property owner did contact me, and uh he was asking for a reduction in his water bill back to October twenty-twenty-first, and I advised him that uh it's not within our authority to uh provide the reduction that our place in the municipality is to carry out policy as directed by council, and that's the only authority that we have. And if he, we, wants to deviate from that authority, that it has to go to council. And then he asked me um how we would go about doing that. So I told him to write a letter to council, and we would put it on the agenda. So he did that, and then he did call me back um a second time and asked me um how he, if he did get the rebate approved by council, how he would go about um getting uh just a rebate on, an ongoing rebate until he re- rented the apartment. And I said, um, it's also in the policy that we need to, you have to inform us at the end of every month, just like all the rest of the residents do. And um if he wanted to get approval for that, that that would also have to go to council. So that's, that's why that's on that, and um my recommendation is to not authorize this right off.
Okay. I put the floor to questions from council. Uh, if you have any questions about this issue, this has been a longstanding issue in our community.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Kissamaker.
I'm all for not charging for uh something that's not being used, but I gotta, my bigger concern is, how do we know anybody's being honest when they say who's using, who's a tenant and who's not? You know what I mean? Like, if you're not um the, if you have three apartments, you could say, I I don't know. How do we know if they're actually being rented or not?
Exactly, and we have been doing that on an honor system, that they do call, and they do it monthly. And this has been in the works now for quite some time. I think about five or six years have we not been? Melissa, do you have the timeline on that of how long we've been actually carrying this out in the community?
It's been in place since I've been the treasurer, and I know um we brought it to coun-, for council consideration at the last passing of the water and sewer rates to abolish this rebate and council. Well, and actually, we were gonna go down to fifty percent rather than a hundred, and council said that they weren't in favor of that, so we still continue with the practice.
Yeah, yeah. Any further comments from council? Oh, I'm seeing a hand raised, sorry. Ted Sheniman, Counselor Sheniman, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it opens the door. If we continue to do that, it opens the door that we'll have an ongoing issue with that. Plus, the time it takes for staff to be able to monitor, and that it eats up a lot of valuable time, I would believe. So I I think we should be best by not approving that on an ongoing basis.
Thank you for that, Counselor Sheniman. Yeah, and um is there anything in our policy that prohibits this from coming to council? Like, if you haven't followed the policy, like, I'm thinking back. I'm pretty sure we denied a request for a snow removal rebate because it didn't fit the parameters, or we went through a poor or ordeal over that matter. So I I'm with Counselor Sheniman on this, that it opens up the door if we're not following our policies. And they're there, like, the rebates, like, the, you gotta call monthly. Go ahead, Melissa.
Another thing that uh I'd like to point out to council, if council does approve this, um then it just opens up that door for the people that are doing it on a regular basis, telling us that they have vacancies. Well, what's the point of letting us know at the end of every month, because if if they just bring it back to council, we can go back a year or two years anyways. So it's, it's punishing the people, well, not punishing, but they're doing their due diligence by letting us know when they have have rebates. So if it, if it's just gonna get overturned when it goes to council, like, what's the point of following the policy? You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I totally, and I agree with you, Melissa. Like, we've set policy, and it is, like, it's unfortunate, like, the, but you've bought, you know, you've uh purchased property in a community. You should learn like, the policy's there, right? Any further comments? I'm, I am in favor with the recommendation from the treasurer not to um authorize this request. Uh, Counselor Drago Stefanic, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I I agree with the treasurer hundred percent. I think we should uh proceed as a recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further comment? I'll put the motion on the floor. Counselor Belinda Kissamaker, go ahead.
This is a dumb question, but is this a house or is this an apartment building?
It's an apartment building. It's unit three of the apartment building. Can you see the letter there in your agenda?
Okay, I missed it. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I I missed the, uh, we're, we're gonna come to it, and I missed a letter because the link, there was one more link. I missed it. But anyway, go ahead. Okay, I'm gonna, if I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Ted Sheniman, second by Counselor? Drago? I have Drago Stefanic, but thank you, Counselor Kissamaker. So that's second by Counselor Drago Stefanic. Be it resolved at the Council, the Corporation, the Township of Hornpane does hereby authorize the Client Service Manager to write off the water and sewer user fees in the amount of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents, which represents the vacancy of one unit at one forty-four First Avenue from October twenty-first, twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Be it resolved, be it further resolved that pursuant of the section nine-point-one of the Township of Hornpane's Water and Sewer Rates by law, the property owner shall notify the municipality in writing of any vacant units by the last business day of every month in order to, for, sorry, in order to qualify for any further water and sewer vacancy rebates. So that's the motion on the floor, and I put that to a vote. Those in favor of this motion? Those not in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Okay, I have three. Counselor Kissamaker, Belinda?
Yes.
Thank you, Peter.
Sorry, I I vote, uh, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I don't have the bottom of my motions when I'm reading. So we have, no one is voting for the motion, and everyone's voting against the motion. Is that the yes, Belinda, just to clarify?
Yeah.
Okay. So this motion is denied, and it's um and if I can get clarification, Eileen, just, we haven't run into this issue on the bottom of the resolution. What is the, actually, it's carri-, it's carried, denied, and deferred? What's the other, I'm looking for the word denied. If it's not denied, I wanna use the proper term.
It's defeated.
Defeated, thank you. So that motion is defeated. I apologize, council. Okay, moving on to nine-point-three, Airport Management, Council of Ontario. So I open up for discussions on this letter. So any comments from council on this letter? I would just like to note that we did get funding for our airport. And um that we're not in need right now of infrastructure funding. We, we certainly will be in the future again. But um I was concerned that I would like to see some advocacy for operations funds for airports. I would like to see some advocacy for operations funds for airports, especially when we're looking at the size of our municipality. So um one thing that I would like to do is reply to the AMCO and ask them to advocate for operational funds as well. So I do think we can submit this letter with some word changing and um saying how imperative it is that Hornpain would have not got the upgrades without the funding, that other small communities in our situation would be of the same, that we need this type of infrastructure funding for small airports. And um and in addition to that operational costs, that that might be the might the right wording and then we're supporting our fellow members who have airports that need infrastructure upgrades. Is that uh? Any further comment or any comments councillor councillor Drago Stefanic, go ahead.
Uh thanks, mayor. Yeah, I think we you were very fortunate to get a great grant, that's wonderful. But I think that as far as instrumentation, technology, I don't, I never heard anything being upgraded there for years and years and think if it becomes fully operational, I think that if technology, we're back in the eighties, I know that for a fact out there. So I mean, yeah, if you could sort of uh melt it into the letter, I think instrumentation, technology, it would be really appreciated. That'd be above and beyond the operating cost. I think that'd be also infrastructure and that we because we have basically nothing there, minimum. I know that for a fact. So instrumentation, instrumentation, technology, anything that's related to a small airport to to function properly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Drago. Councillor Ted Scheneman, go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, the letter as it stated sounds, it's sort of ambiguous for us being that we've already received funding so that would certainly have to be revamped, but certainly looking at requests for operational funding would be imperative. That would be a great uh opportunity to be able to put that in. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, I have no problem um drafting that letter and changing it up so that it suits us. And then we can um have the resolution authorize the mayor to s- or the staff to submit a letter from the mayor. And that would be ea- that uh I think that would be easier on staff and I'm sure I could do that by tomorrow morning and have it out to Eileen. Okay, I'm gonna put the motion on to the floor. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpain does hereby authorize staff to submit a letter on behalf of the mayor to Carol Hughes, MP, Algoa, Manitoule and Capes Gasing, encouraging airport inclusion in the ongoing federal and provincial infrastructure programs, program negotiation. And that's where our resolution on the floor, sorry, our motion on the floor stops. With, do we want to add with the inclusion of operational costs? I'm seeing yes from Ted, yes from Belinda. Peter, are you uh in agreement to add that to our our motion at the end? Is Peter still online with us?
I'm sorry, I'm speaking and I had the mic turned off. Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I can't see.
I was I was trying to yell at the phone.
Okay, yeah. And councillor Stefanic? Yes, okay. So the end of that motion reads inclusion of the ongoing federal and provincial infrastructure program negotiations and to assist with operational costs, period. And I put that motion to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on, we're in co- uh correspondence information only section, ten point one, if I can get a mover and a seconder for receipt of these or these uh information items. Moved by councillor.
I'll move it.
Peter Kistemaker, second by councillor. Belinda Kistemaker, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpain does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda, the regular meeting of council held on Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. And there are a few items in there, councillor, I want uh council, I want to highlight ten point two. And that's the NORD's funding that we received. Phenom is looking for information on um how it worked and the benefits of that. And I do think it's great funding because I believe, I'm not sure, I can't remember everything about it, but it was stackable, there was all sorts of different um flexibility with this funding. And I believe our allocation was somewhere around sixty-six thousand or sixty-seven thousand a year and it was uh multiple year funding. So I would just ask that we do submit, Eileen, that the staff does submit the comments to Mac Bane so that they have the advocacy for Phenom to go forward with that. I would like to see the funding program continue. Any any funding that's stackable and flexible for Northern Ontario is beneficial to our communities.
Uh so I just wanted to confirm, mayor, for it that um the staff are definitely in agreement of continuing um to receive these funds. And I've also already reached out to Phenom and um uh provided them with the with this information.
Okay, is there anything further from council? Okay, thank you for that. I do have one question about our quarterly operational report from Aqua, ten point four. And I know that we can't get the answer tonight, but I am gonna pose the answer or pose the question so we can get an answer brought back. Our wastewater treatment plant flows, when it says on page uh two of the report underneath wastewater treatment plant flows and I'm in the report quarter three of twenty-twenty-two, it says the plant capacity for our Hornpain wastewater facility is one thousand three hundred and sixty-four uh cubic meters and I'm assuming that's per day. And then it was showing the daily flow, we had a maximum daily flow over that. And I was just wondering what happens in that case. It it just didn't make sense to me that we had the maximum, but we we had flow over the maximum. And did if and if we had um I I just would like to know the answer to that. I I'm, I don't wanna assume anything.
All right, mayor Ford, can I just get you to repeat which which section you were looking at again?
It's in the Aqua quarterly report uh of Q three. It's page two on the wastewater treatment plant flows.
Got it, okay.
Okay, and you can see on July, it's in July, that there was a maximum daily, a daily maximum flow of one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven, which is six hundred over the facility capacity. And if we could just reach out and find out what that is?
Yep, I can reach out to Aqua and inquire about this.
Okay, thank you. Those were the only comments I had about uh the information only section. Is there any from council? Okay, if I'm not seeing any, we'll put that package, the receipt of that package to a vote. Those in favor? And that's carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to eleven committee and board updates, council committee updates, and we'll go around the table. Councillor Peter Kistemaker on the phone.
I have nothing to add at this moment, um, madam mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor Kistemaker, councillor Belinda Kistemaker.
I don't have anything to add right now.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ted Scheneman?
Thank you, madam mayor. I received a note from the uh from Heather uh at the hospital saying, we've been working hard to handle staffing shortages and impacted COVID on staffing over the holidays. Laboratory department has undergone some changes with the support of the region and a full report will be provided at the next board meeting on the twenty-fourth. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes, we had uh just to follow up on that councillor Scheneman, we did have a team recruitment meeting on Monday. Um so that's the recruitment committee for the entire community. And Eileen and I sit on that to try and bring people to town and we had heard some of that at that meeting as well. So I look forward to hearing what the board discusses. Councillor Drago Stefanic, go ahead.
Yeah, very simple. I have a PHU board meeting coming up a week's time and two weeks' time from now I have a library board meeting coming up. I will keep couple, council of brass wants to meet a course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Stefanic. Uh one question about the Porcupine Health Unit, uh councillor Stefanic. Did you lose, I'm because I know Sue Paris was on your board and she was not reelected. So did you lose some board members and how was that dealt with at the PHU?
Um there are, actually, there'll be seventy percent will be new board members. Yeah, because if you lost, then if you will not be on uh on the board, previous, they were on the board, so there'll be I would say seventy percent be new board members uh uh from correspondence, I'm reading. I'll see that next week to who's gonna be there. I think there'll only both four of us, there are original people coming back.
Oh, wow, okay, okay.
And elections will occur uh next week as well.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Stefanic. Okay, and um for council, I will have a written um lineup of my meetings for our meeting next week so that you can see what I've been up to and if you have any questions on that. I I do wanna highlight that on Monday, I met with uh yesterday for lunch, Charles Kurtwell of the Northern Policy Institute and was able to, uh we talked about housing and and looking at the uh research that they've already done for Northern Ontario regarding housing and increasing population and trying to grow the north. And so there were several documents and Charles readily got back to me today with all sorts of documents, so I'm looking forward to gleaning information from those, but it was a really good meeting and I encourage all of council to look at NPI's website. There's all sorts of information there and uh but I'll have a fuller update for that next council meeting. Okay, so with that, unless you have, and also just to let council know, I am traveling for Ontario Good Roads meetings for Tuesday and, or sorry, not Tuesday, Thursday and Friday this week, and I am in Roma at the Rural Ontario Municipal Association. We did get our delegation for Monday and uh with Minister Rickford and we're, I'll be traveling with our economic development officer, Stacy Randell. So we're not traveling with, but attending the conference with. And if there's any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Uh conferences, twelve point one, we deferred this from our last meeting because uh we we were three of us at the meeting, so we decided to leave it. So we need to fill in some names right off the bat. I believe the first one, um Eileen, Stacy Randell will be attending EDCO.
Uh no, she won't be attending uh this this one uh this year.
Okay. And usually, we usually don't, council usually does not attend EDCO. Is that something that any of the councillors have interest in? Okay. Uh the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM Sustainable Communities Conference, this seems very interesting. I was looking at it today. Is there, had we had this conference listed before? Or was this something new? Did we find this from another conference?
I believe we've had this one listed before, um just going to confirm quickly.
Is there someone from staff that wants to attend?
Uh uh sorry, I was just going to confirm that we've had people, we've had staff attend this one before. Um but for this one, for this current one, um in twenty-twenty-three, we don't have any staff um that would be able to attend. Uh if virtual attendance is a possibility, then perhaps, but otherwise not uh in person. Oh, there is hybrid offering, so.
Yeah, there is a hybrid offering and they are doing the main uh the main venues and I think some of the sessions, it's a much scaled down offering. Okay, is there anyone from council that would be willing to attend? Councillor Sh- Oh, sorry.
Madam mayor, I would be interested. Thank you.
Okay, so we have councillor Ted Scheneman and that would be in person, Ted?
Yes, I would be interested in that. Thank you, madam mayor.
Okay. I am interested in that uh conference as well, but I'm going to delay until we finish all the conferences and see where everyone is before I insert there. But I do think there's benefit in that conference. Okay, uh Thunder Bay Municipal District Municipal League. And that's councillor Belinda Kistemaker. Are you able to attend?
I'm running into uh an issue with the the date, but um I would like to if I can and if I can't, I was hoping that Ted would go.
Okay, so do we wanna, we wanna put one, is uh I believe they're transferable. I think we've done that in the past where we've transferred the the registration. So would we, Belinda, would you like to register and then um Ted, are you able to attend if she's unable to attend?
Yes, I am, madam mayor.
Okay. So we'll insert uh Belinda Kistemaker. And if we have to change res, we can bring a forward resolution to change that up if we need to, if you're unable to attend.
Thank you.
Okay, so the Ontario Good Roads Association, I'm definitely attending, Mayor Cheryl Fort. And um is there anyone else attending that this year?
Uh for staff, uh the public works manager and uh the deputy clerk um have interest in attending.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Eileen, I didn't confirm at the beginning. Someone's jotting down the names in the background in the into the resolution?
Yes, the deputy clerk is, Janice, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, and then the Northwest Ontario Municipal Association, NOMA?
Um I would like to put my name down for this if possible.
Eileen, yes, I think this would be a great idea, Eileen, for you. Um we've discussed this a little bit earlier today about meeting some of your colleagues in the north and they're gonna understand the challenges better than some of the people in the south. Hopefully. Is there anyone from council that wants to go to NOMA? Okay. Okay. Okay, the FCM, or sorry, not FCM, it's Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, the NOM, and that's in Perry Sound this year. Drago, Counselor Drago Stefanik, okay? No other, no other names there? Okay, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and this is in Toronto.
Um, I have the Public Works Manager down for this one.
Okay, Public Works Manager, Dwayne Goodrow. Okay, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. And just before we move on to that one, I, I'm just leaving open to insert my name where we need somebody, so I may go to FCM as well. I'm looking at both those FCM conferences, just so council knows. Uh, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, is in London this year.
I would like to attend this one, if possible.
Yeah. Peter Kissmaker, great. Counselor Peter Kissmaker. Because we probably will have a delegation at that one. Uh, definitely, probably the update for Minister Rickford for them all. Okay, Tourism Industry Association of Ontario. I know in the past, the Economic Development Office has been attending. Is it something we need to attend this year?
Uh, no, she won't be attending this year's.
Okay. Okay, well, if I could insert my name into the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Sustainable Communities Conference and into the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for um, May as well. The end of May, please. And the first one for the seventh, Tuesday, the seventh, the first one I'd like, um, yeah, I'll do that. Oh, I've got a, I'm sorry if I'm not seeing your hand right away. Counselor Ted Scheneman, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would be interested in the Ontario Tourism Summit if no one else, if I wasn't in curring on anybody else or overstepping. Thank you.
Okay. And Ted Scheneman, and, okay. Usually we have within our budget that we can afford two conferences. I believe, if I'm correct. And I just want to state that I am going to be watching my budget for the second FCM. If I do not have go to the second FCM, I will not be attending. Once we have our budget passed. Counselor Belinda Kissmaker, go ahead.
If you don't attend that one, I, I'd probably be interested in that one.
In FCM?
Yeah.
The, so the second, the one in Toronto, the second one?
The one in Toronto, yeah.
Okay, great. That's perfect.
Okay, so if you can't go, I'll go.
Thank you, Belinda. I appreciate that. Yeah. And we might have connections there too with DN from the Rural Development Network. And we can get some more good stuff going for our community. Okay, I don't have all of that listed out. Are we able to get the Deputy Clerk to read that resolution? I'll get a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Peter Kissmaker, seconded by Counselor Ted Scheneman.
The Deputy Clerk is just coming over
Oh, okay.
To read, to read it from my desk.
Thank you.
Before I read it out, I just wanted to confirm two things.
Okay.
One, am I okay to just get rid of EDCO from the resolution then, because no one's going?
Yes, you could, yes.
And the second question was, um, I missed if Counselor Belinda Kissmaker is also going to FCM, or if that's just if we can't make it?
That's a replacement. If I can't make it, she's my replacement?
Okay, so we'll leave it out for now and then change your.
Yeah, are we able to actually include those two right in the resolution, and then that way it's already done, and we don't have to bring it back to council?
I can absolutely do that.
Okay, so we have two of those? The one was, um,
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jen.
No problem. Okay. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Horn Payne does hereby approve the expenditures to be incurred at the following or by the following to attend the following annual general meetings and/or annual conferences. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM Sustainable Communities Conference, on Tuesday, February seventh to Friday, February tenth, twenty twenty-three, in Ottawa, Ontario, with a hybrid offering. Counselor Ted Scheneman and Mayor Cheryl Fort. Thunder Bay District Municipal League, TBDML, Thursday, March twenty-third to Friday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, in Thunder Bay, Ontario. Counselor Belinda Kissmaker with Counselor Ted Scheneman as the replacement. The Ontario Good Roads Association, OGRAS, Sunday, April sixteenth to Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, in Toronto, Ontario. Mayor Cheryl Fort, Public Works Manager, Deputy Clerk. The Northwestern Municipal, Northwestern Ontario Municipal Association, NOMA. Wednesday, April twenty-sixth to Friday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, in Thunder Bay, Ontario. Eileen Singh, CAO Clerk. Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities, FNM, Monday, May eighth to Wednesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, in Perry Sound, Ontario. Um, Counselor Drago Stefanik, Mayor Cheryl Fort. Federation of Canadian Municipalities, FCM Annual Conference and Trade Show, Thursday, May twenty-fifth to Sunday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, in Toronto, Ontario. Public Works Manager, Mayor Cheryl Fort, and Counselor Belinda Kissmaker as a replacement. And the Ontario, or the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, Monday, August twenty-first to Wednesday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, in London, Ontario. Eileen Singh, CAO Clerk, and Counselor Peter Kissmaker.
Okay, thank you for that, Jen. There's just one correction. I am not.
Oh, yes, sorry. Oh, sorry. I'm just the tourism one.
That, that's all right.
I also, and the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario, TIAO, Wednesday, October twenty-fifth to Thursday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, in Mississauga, Ontario, Counselor Ted Scheneman.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I put that to a vote, council. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried and opposed. Thank you, Jen. I appreciate that. I can't type on my resolutions. Okay, so we're moving on, council. We're at seven seventeen, so I'm going to continue on. We'll power through here. Uh, we have new another business, so it's thirteen point one is the Ontario Clean Water Agency Contact Update Contact List. So I'll put it onto the floor. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Drago Stefanik, seconded by Counselor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Horn Payne does hereby provide the Ontario Clean Water Agency with the following contact list in the event of an adverse water sample being received outside of office hours, order in which to be called. The contact name is Dwayne Goodrow, Public Works Manager, Eileen Singh, CAO Clerk. Melissa Chenier-Treasure, Cheryl Fort, Mayor. And then we had a prescribed list of the councillors. And I would propose that we have Counselor Belinda Kissmaker, Counselor Drago Stefanik, Counselor Peter Kissmaker, and Counselor Ted Scheneman. Does that work for council?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, just to let council know, we've, we've never gone that far down the list. Order in which to be, oh, sorry, and I put that to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that's carried and opposed. Township of Horn Payne Rebranding. We have a report from our Economic Development Officer, Stacy Randell. And Stacy, would you like to speak to your report before I open up floors, the floor for questions?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor Fort. If there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Okay, great. Council, is there any questions to this report? Okay, I'm not seeing any. If I can get a mover and a seconder to put the motion on the floor. Peter Kissmaker, seconded by Counselor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township does, sorry, I'm going to restart that. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Horn Payne does hereby authorize the CAO Clerk to issue a request for proposal, RFP, for the Township of Horn Payne Rebranding. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to Stacy, did you have something? I heard a noise. I just want to make sure we have everyone. Okay, we're carrying on. Okay, we're at item fourteen bylaws. So the first one is the bylaw nineteen seventy-six to amend the water and sewer rates. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Drago Stefanik, seconded by Counselor Ted Scheneman. It resolved that bylaw number nineteen seventy-six being a bylaw to amend the water and sewage rates for the municipality for the year twenty twenty-two. Be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any comment or discussion on that bylaw? Okay, there being none, I put that bylaw to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried, opposed. Bylaw number nineteen seventy-seven, twenty twenty-three interim tax bylaw. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Ted Scheneman, seconded by Counselor.
I'll second it.
Peter Kissmaker. Be resolved that bylaw number nineteen seventy-seven being a bylaw to levy certain interim rates, taxes, and charges for the year twenty twenty-three. Be hereby read a first, second time, and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any questions on the interim taxes bylaw? Or comments? Okay, there being none. I put that to a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried, none opposed. Bylaw number nineteen seventy-eight, the Ontario Trillium Fund Capital Grant Contract. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Drago Stefanik, seconded by Counselor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number nineteen seventy-eight being a bylaw to enter into a funding agreement grant contract between the Corporation of the Township of Horn Payne and the Ontario Trillium Foundation for the purpose of establishing a multi-use ball, baseball field. Be hereby read a first, a second time, and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor?
Aye.
And that is carried, none opposed. Bylaw number nineteen seventy-nine, PSD Citywide Agreement, the Building Condition Assessment Project. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Ted Scheneman, seconded by I'm sorry, my computer froze and I did not see a seconder yet. Seconded by Belinda Kiss, Counselor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number nineteen seventy-nine being a bylaw to enter into an agreement with PSD Citywide Incorporated to provide building condition assessments of the Township of Horn Payne's facilities. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time, and finally passed. Any discussion on the bylaw? Go ahead, Eileen.
I just wanted to mention, just as information for council, that this is on the agenda just because we haven't signed the funding agreement with FCM yet. And we, we need to lock in the twenty twenty-two pricing, so that's why this is on here.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I put that bylaw to a vote. Those in favor, council?
Aye.
Okay, I didn't see Counselor Ted Scheneman for the vote. Are you in favor, sir? Okay, I see you now. Thank you. That was none opposed. And I apologize for that extra bit there, council. I'm, my cameras are freezing on me. Okay, we're, item number fifteen, motions and notice of motions. There being none, we move into a closed session, so if I can, item number sixteen. If I can get a mover and a seconder to move the close. Moved by Counselor Drago Stefanik, seconded by Counselor.
I'll second it.
Peter Kissmaker. Be resolved that the next portion of the meeting at seven twenty-four PM be closed to the public in order to discuss personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board pursuant of section two thirty-nine two B of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. Okay, council, I put that to a vote. Those in favor of going into closed?
Aye.
And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, you have a, you have a. Okay, you have a, you have a.